Thank you. All right, so this is the Minnetrista City Council meeting for May 17th, 2021. It's seven o'clock, so I am going to call the meeting to order. In our first order, I'm going to do a whole call. Can I call your name? You can say, "I'm here." And I'll call you at the same time. So I place the way that the mayor.
Just enough while you're kind of chopping.
And the members present, Pam Mortenson.
Here.
Okay. When I say Pam Mortenson, I'm sorry.
Up here.
John Chumperland.
Here.
Okay, and John Chumperland?
Here.
Ann McGregor.
Here.
Ann McGregor, thank you. Kathleen Refkin.
Here.
All right, and then we have our staff with us this evening. We have City Administrator Mike Broney.
I'm here.
Community Development Director David Abel.
I am here.
Finance Director Brian Grimm.
Here.
And Director of Public Safety, we have Chief Falls.
Here.
Director of Administration, Ally Poulphus.
I'm here.
Thank you. Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters.
Here.
And we have our consultant, City Attorney Ron Beatty.
Here.
And our City Engineer Allison Felsky.
Here.
And I don't think Adam is with us this evening, is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if our City Clerk Chris Lindquist has joined us yet. I'm sorry.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I am here.
All right. With that, we will move on then to approval of our agenda. Well, would somebody like to say the pledge of allegiance? Pam, would you like to do that? Thank you.
Yep. I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to approval of our agenda. Are there any additions or changes? I don't believe there are. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
This is John, so moved.
Okay, I think John beat you to it, Kathleen. So Mr. Chumperland made that motion and Ms. Refkin seconded that. Is that okay, Kathleen?
Yeah.
All right. With that, all those in favor will signify with aye. Kathleen?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Lisa, motion passes 5-0. So we'll move on to our first agenda item, special presentations. I believe this is going to be our Finance Director, Brian Grimm. It's a 2020, not 21, but 2020 financial audit and presentation. I'll give it over to you, Brian, and you may have other people you will include.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I'll try to keep this brief, seeing there's a lot of information in the packet. And Dennis Hogaveen and Lucas Chase with Clifton Larson Allen are with us to do the presentation that was included in our packet. And I think Mike may share the screen too, so you can just see it in front of you also. But yeah, it starts on page three of the packet. And there's just some summary information that pulls out the highlights of the general fund in that memo. I think we had discussed that pretty much in an update in February, March, our preliminary numbers pretty much ended up being our final audited numbers. So, but you'll see, we had the positive variance mainly due to the CARES funds and the building permit revenue being higher. Otherwise, our expenditures were pretty consistent with our budget in previous years. So, yeah, seeing it's a nice evening and they got a presentation. And I got a soccer game in Marshall to go to tomorrow night for my daughter. I'll be brief and turn it over to them, so.
Thank you, Brian, for not taking 24 hours. Thank you. All right. Go ahead.
All right. Let's see. And my driver, Mike, you're driving the boat here, right? So if we go to that first slide, we'll just quickly mention the four agenda items. So we're gonna briefly go through the required communications. There's a separate letter that I will buzz through here quick and then go through the audit results. And then I'm gonna have Lucas Chase buzz through the financial results, the key metric, you know, general fund results and enterprise fund results. And then we'll end with a few other items with some upcoming GASB items that are coming down the line and see if anybody has any questions for us. But as we go through things, you know, we do not mind if things come to mind. If you want to interrupt and ask some questions as things come to mind, I'm sure if something is a question for you, others probably have that same question. So we don't mind if you interrupt or if you want to wait till the end. We will be soliciting questions at the end as well. So either way, it's totally fine with us. Thank you so much for having us. We always like to start by thanking those that do have the lifting, though. By that, we mean Brian Grimm and the entire finance team. They did a fantastic job with the audit this year. It went very well, very timely. You know, we've been probably the earliest things have all put together in terms of the audit. So it really went very smoothly this year. And we always want to thank Mike Broney and Brian Grimm for all the time that they spent working with us to review the draft documents and get those communications correct and things like that. So we really appreciate it. We couldn't do our work without all the work that they put into it. For anybody that's new with the council, or anybody else that might be listening, just want to make sure that everyone realizes that the city does go above and beyond what's required in terms of the annual financial reporting. You know, an annual audit is required, but the city does go above and beyond what's required by putting together a comprehensive annual financial report. The acronym for that is, of course, a CAFER. The CAFER is submitted to the GFOA program for review. It's a pretty comprehensive program that GFOA has put together with very high standards for financial reporting. And I don't know how many years the city's been submitting that program, but it's quite a feather in the city's cap to submit to that GFOA review program. So 2019, the city once again qualified for that program. And we fully anticipate that the 2020 CAFER submission will once again qualify for that award. I think if you looked at the number of pages of the PDF of the CAFER this year, I think it came out to about 147 pages. So a CAFER is just very high level of financial reporting. The things that sets a CAFER apart again is just a transmit letter and a significant amount of statistical reporting that goes into that. So it's a lot of work by your finance department, but we think it's well worth it. And it's recognized by bond rating agencies, you know, people that issue debt on your behalf and people that borrow you money and whatnot. So it's very well worth it. So very commendable that you put the time and energy into that. And the next slide then gets into the required communications. The letter that is in your packet that this information is coming from is called the Summary of Minnetrista's Governance Communications Letter. And this is just some required communications. This is not everything that is in that letter, but we just kind of extracted certain communications that we wanted to put in this PowerPoint. And it's just a reminder that our audit provides reasonable but not absolute assurance in terms of everything. Of course, the audit is a risk-based approach. We certainly can't test every single transaction that the city had during the year. But since it's a risk-based approach, we can give you a good, solid opinion that provides reasonable but, of course, not absolute assurances as we indicate there. And then that letter also summarizes the significant accounting estimates that go into those financial statements, the most important being the useful lives of capital assets, evaluation of the investments, post-employment benefits, and then the net pension liabilities and deferred inflows and deferred outflows and things like that. So this happened to be one of the years, and I think partly responsible because of the impact of COVID-19 delaying some things. But there were no new accounting policies that were adopted in 2020. So that was kind of an unusual year. GASB has been fairly active, but this was a year that nothing new impacted the financial statements. One of the disclosures in that letter was that we did receive the full cooperation from management. So that's always good to see. And as far as actual audit results, of course, the main thing that you're hiring an auditing firm to do is to give their opinion on the financial statements themselves. And of course, we're always happy to report that we've issued an unmodified or what's known as a clean opinion on the financial statements themselves. That is as good of an audit opinion as any CPA firm is able to give on the financial statements. So that's what you always want to hear, that we've issued a clean opinion on the financial statements. And then one of the letters that we're required to issue, it's under a separate cover called the Minnesota, I'm sorry, Minnetrista Internal Control Communications Letter. It's regarding the city's internal controls. It wouldn't be the end of the world if we had something to report as far as the city's internal controls. But for 2020, we had no exceptions noted that we had to report. So it's always good to hear. Not easily accomplished, but you guys do take those things seriously. And so it's getting to be harder and harder to get a year where you don't have anything reported as far as internal controls. And similarly, the Minnesota Legal Compliance Letter, which is noted under the separate letter called Minnetrista's Minnesota Legal Compliance Letter under a separate document. Again, getting anecdotally difficult to have a year when you have nothing noted. So we had a year where we had no exceptions noted. And I like to remind councils that it wouldn't be the end of the world if we had something to report, because it can be as simple as a bill not getting paid within a deadline, a statutory deadline, you know, could be sitting on an administrator's desk somewhere that doesn't get remitted to the business office on time to get, you know, paid within a statutory deadline. But again, very commendable to have such a clean sweep on those audit opinion letters. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Lucas Chase. He's the manager on the audit, so he's gonna handle the financial results. And I'll add some color commentary, but again, to the extent you've got questions as we go through this, I'll join the discussion as things warrant, and then we'll come back at the end, just to wrap things up.
Thank you, Dennis. Yeah, you want to go to the next slide, Mike? There you go. Yep, so general fund, unassigned fund balance. So this is of the bars are your total unassigned fund balance in millions. And then the green line shows that as a percent of your total expenditures for the year. And you can see we had a nice uptick in 2020 thanks to the coronavirus relief funds that the city was able to use to offset some of the public safety, your police, in this case, wages and benefits. For the most part, there was a couple other small little grants you guys did. So that helped increase unassigned fund balance. And if you're looking at the percentages there, it increased from 52% in 2019 to 64% this year. And then there is a signed amount in there for the next year's deficit budget spending that has been set up for the last couple of years. If you add that, $217,416 in, it goes up to 68%. So it'll sound like big numbers, but your minimum fund balance policy is 40%. And the opposite state auditor recommends a minimum fund balance of 35% to 50% just for cities in case of cash flow issues that come up and allows the city flexibility as it's looking at future projects or maintenance and things like that. So it's a good, healthy fund balance to have going forward here that the city was managed to build up. And if there's no other comments there, I'll move on here to the general fund revenue. So this is kind of like a sideways stacked bar graph, just adds up to 100%. So it doesn't, you know, if you actually looked at this and it was dollar amount absolute values, you know, the total revenues actually increased this year. But so this is looking at the makeup of revenues as a percent. So, you know, your largest one is, of course, property taxes, but you'll see a pretty big uptick in that, it looks like a red bar to me in these slides here, that's your intergovernmental revenues. And again, that's those coronavirus relief funds. That was 579, just about $580,000 that proportionally increased that. And then all the other revenues actually only increased slightly or were pretty consistent in the prior year. So then as a percent of revenues, of course, they decreased. The next slide is a similar look at general fund expenditures. And if you look at that, that almost looks identical, doesn't it, 2019, 2020? It's because it pretty much was. City managed expenditures very well before and throughout the pandemic. And all the categories stayed within plus or minus 1% of the prior expenditures. And then in your total, in the general fund, increased just $85,000, which is only 2% of prior year expenditures. So that's pretty commendable. And your next slide is just kind of all the previous slides now next to each other. So you have the dark blue bars, your unassigned fund balance we looked at in the first, then the light blue is your revenues in total, and then the red's your expenditures. So you can see all of the blues higher than the red one. We obviously built that fund balance, so the dark blue line went up there. As noted earlier, your expenditures were consistent, and for the most part, your revenues increased because of that relief paid. And then, you know, there's a budget increase in the levy and your property tax collection rate is pretty high. So then your property tax revenues and related revenues increased about 6%, which accounted for most your increase in revenues there. And then, of course, the amounts above do not pull into account the other financing sources and uses such as transfers in this case. So the next slide here, when we get into some of the enterprise funds, so like your water, sewer, and stormwater. So the water is the blue line, looking at your total unrestricted or spendable net position. Then you have a red one for the sewer and a green one for the stormwater. So this is pulling out your net investment of capital assets. So when you look at water, it looks like it had a decrease, but actually, your net position increased by 359,000. It's just, as you're probably well aware of, the water fund invested quite a bit into, you know, your new water tower project and the water tower rehab. So you had a large increase in your net investment of capital assets. And then that was planned. And that sounds like it will continue to be a trend with the water project, because you're just into that new water tower project. So as you keep investing into that water infrastructure, that trend with the blue line will continue. And when you look at the sewer and stormwater between 2019 and 2020, they actually stayed pretty consistent. So the next slide, we're gonna take a closer look at the water fund. We're gonna look at the dark blues, your operating revenues, the white blues, the expenses. The green line is then your operating income or loss. And then to kind of look at it, you know, back out some of the non-cash depreciation, you know, because you already have those capital investments, and now you're depreciating over the life of the asset. If we back that out and you kind of get closer to what it would be like if you looked at your cash flow statement for your cash provided from operations. So when I look at this, this is actually the first year where there's positive operating income since 2017. So you had operating income, you know, full accrual of about $25,000. Actually had a total decrease in net position, but received about $519,000 in contributive capital from developers. When we back out depreciation, which is noncash, you know, you can see that purple line also on your way up there, you're almost at $900,000, which is about approximates, if you look at your cash flow statements, your cash flow from operations is about $824,000. So the water fund, you know, you actually had an operating income, you broke even there. And then when you get out those noncash type items, it carried itself pretty well. And then there's a similar slide, this next one, now looking at the sewer fund. So same colors and setup here. You can see it's been pretty consistent the prior two or three years with small operating loss of about $81,000. Well, 2019 was about $91,000. So you're nearly covering depreciation. You know, if you're at zero, you'd be covering that noncash depreciation. When you add depreciation back to operating income to kind of get back to cash basis, you're about $285,000. That's that purple line. So it's just about covering the annual depreciation of those assets. Your total net position increased about $395,000. And then there is also significant capital contributions from, you know, related developer projects that were completed of $465,000 in the sewer fund. And this slide is another one, looking at your stormwater now, same idea, same setup. You can see here, revenues were really consistent, but your expenses decreased. So your loss, you know, you actually did better. Your loss decreased. So you had a loss of $62,000 in 2019, and then you did a little better with the loss of about $30,000 in 2020. When we add back depreciation, then you're at close to that kind of cash basis income, you're at $157,000. So, you know, day-to-day operations, you're doing just fine. It's just kind of that depreciation of the existing assets that brings it to operating loss. And the decrease in expenses, if you're wondering, mostly came from maintenance supplies expenses. This was kind of that savings came in and allowed operating income to do a little bit better. So there's a slide here. So this is just kind of looking at your next, this current year and then the next four, five years of debt service. And this includes both your principal and interest. So in 2019, you'll look out even further than what we have here. Your total debt, principal, and interest was $19,538,544. And then you had a little bit of an increase in 2020 to $20,426,544. You know, you paid a total principal in 2020 of about $1.5 million. And, you know, in each year, you're basically at about, you know, $2 million in 2021, 2022, and 2023. Then it kind of starts to drop down as your bonds start to roll off and they mature. You had a slight increase in total future debt service coming up just because, you know, you paid principal and interest of about $1.9 million in 2020 while adding about almost $2.9 million from the 2028 bonds that are in your governmental activities and your business type funds. And then there's the next slide here. So this is 2019 data. And the reason for that is, of course, you know, we're just issued your 2020 audits. All of your neighboring cities also are just giving their 2020 information to the opposite state auditor. So we pulled this data that was available for 2019. And we're just kind of looking at taxes per capita and looking at your neighboring cities. And you can kind of see Minnetrista is pretty well lined up, about in the middle of its peers here, you know, well below Orono, and a little bit of Medina, but pretty well lined up with the others there. And then the next slide is using 2019 data as well, and it's looking at current expenditures per capita. And of course, this one can be all over the place depending on, you know, what council members are deciding on and the needs of the city for, you know, current maintenance and actual operating expenses and, you know, and what management decides. But with all that in mind, you can see Minnetrista is kind of right in the middle of neighboring comparable cities. So we have another slide here. Now, this is kind of getting away from the financial, and this is the other items. We just kind of want to let you know the big changes coming up. As Dennis was mentioning, you know, the GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board has been pretty busy, but due to the pandemic, they issued GASB Statement Number 95, which pushed back, oh, is there a question? Nope, okay. So it pushed back all standards one year except for the biggest one, which is the lease standard, number 87, pushed that back 18 months, which effectively puts back two years the way your year-end lands. So now, I think if you look at this slide last year, we would have been implementing the lease standard, and now we have until 2022 to implement that. And basically, what that is, is any lease that's longer than a year, which is pretty much any lease, you have very few. Like if you had a month, a real month, month lease, then it would be excluded from this, but it would used to be what we call a capital lease. And it also changed some of the definitions of leases, so you could have some embedded leases and agreements with vendors. So you have to, it'll be something that's pretty overarching, and you have to want to look at it. And you could be, so when, this would be both expenditure and revenue leases. So when you're looking at your antenna leases, you could actually have a long-term receivable and a deferred inflow. And if you had any, although the city doesn't have too many expenditure side leases except for your copiers, which are probably going to be immaterial, of course, we'll look at in 2022, then for those you'd have in your government-wide statements, an asset and a long-term liability and a lot more notes. You know, if you just had a capital lease, now there's going to be a lot more notes. And you can also have timing differences that will cause some deferred inflows and outflows. And then the following year, in 2023, we'll have a similar look at things, but I think basically GASB is trying to grab anything it missed with the lease standard for subscription-based information technology arrangements. So this is basically if you have software that you have a subscription to, you didn't actually buy, that's a year or longer. Say if you had Microsoft Office, I forget what it's called, but it was a subscription versus just buying your Office suite, that'd be an example, or a timekeeping system or something. I think maybe your squad cars might have some leases with radios and things like that. They could, that could be affected by that standard in 2023. And then Dennis touched on the next bullet point pretty well already, so I won't go too far into it, but just mention again, because it is commendable, that the city did get their GFOA certificate for 2019 and fully expect, they are applying for the 2020, and we'd expect them to get it for 2020 as well. And there's a lot of extra work that goes in that, things like transmit letters, stats tables, just the new GFOA application process and responding to other little comments and making sure everything on their checklist is taken care of. But all that helps provide, the city provides its readers with a lot more information and then transparency. So any questions? Otherwise, we'd like to say thank you for your time and your staff's hard work on this audit.
Thank you very much for that very nice report. Just one comment or question, maybe. 19, page 19 in our packet, that's the current expenditures comparison per capita. Mound is at 660, excuse me, Minnetrista is at 667. Being that we are a growing community, adding infrastructure, I'm assuming that includes infrastructure as well. It looks to me like that's a pretty good number considering that we're growing far more so than the other communities, maybe with the exception of Medina. But, and yet, we're one of the lower per capita on expenditures. Is that a way, good way of looking at it?
I think so. Now, Dennis, does this pull in capital outlay? I'm thinking it's current expenditures, which wouldn't include capital outlay, but you're right, it's still a pull in maintenance.
I think that's the operational expenditure, but I think to the mayor's point, I think with all of our growth and stuff, obviously, you know, can be additional, you know, staffing. You know, we added a police officer, the drug task force. You know, there's a lot of different things that I think, you know, the mayor's point is very valid. In a growing city, you're gonna, I think we're performing very well as far as when you look at our, whether it's our current expenditures or capital expenditures or any type of, those type of comparisons, I think we compare very well to our peers.
Thank you, Brian. Yep, all right. That's all. Counsel, anybody have questions or comments?
If not, if I could say one more thing, if you don't mind. This is Dennis again.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just wanted to let you know that this will be my last council meeting with you folks. My retirement date has been set for December 31st of this year. And so I leave you in good hands with the audit situation. You have an agreement in place already for the 2021 audit, I believe. You negotiated very shrewdly for three years, so that takes you through 2021. And so I've already talked to Mike and Brian, that takes you through 2021. And we fully expect that more than likely, Lucas will be a signing director that will take you through that next year audit if you choose to, you know, work it through that way. So on my behalf, I wish to thank you for the years that we've been able to work together. I realize I'm not going anywhere for the next period of time. So I live in the city, as you know, and so I've always enjoyed the services of the city and why not. But I wanted to just let you know that that's my current, my current plan. So thank you. And I guess with that, we'll let you get on with your meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hogaveen, and thank you for sharing that. All right. I'm sure Brian is, he's always been very complimentary of you and your firm. So thank you very much for your service to our city. All right. With that, we do have to, I believe, we do want to receive and accept the 2020 financial audit. the twenty twenty financial audit. Is there a motion to do so?
This is Anne, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Anne. Um, Ms. McGregor made that motion, and Mr. Chamberlain seconded that, correct, Mr. Chamberlain?
That's fine.
Thank you. All right, so all those in favor will signify with aye. Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Refkin?
Aye.
Mr. Chamberlain?
Aye.
Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And I vote aye, Lisa Whalen, motion passes, five-oh. So next, we'll move on to, uh, persons to be heard. Do we have anybody with us this evening that wishes to speak under persons to be heard?
And Mayor, since nobody's stepped forward from the, uh, viewers, uh, I do not have anybody that sent me an email today, so there's nothing on my end as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Peroni. All right, so now we'll move on to our consent agenda items. They consist of A, approve our work session meeting minutes from May third, twenty twenty-one. Um, and B, approve our city council regular meeting minutes from May third, twenty twenty-one. Uh, C is a resolution to approve claims. D is a resolution authorizing the execution of a preliminary development agreement for Woodland Cove fourth and fifth additions. And E is a resolution to approve our twenty twenty-one arbitrage services. And F is a resolution to amend the City of Minatrista's four fifty-seven trust plan. And G is a resolution to award a three-year contract for the OMS Plus asset management software. Are there any you wish to remove? Okay, hearing none then. Um, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through G?
I'm all, this is Pam.
Thank you, Ms. Mortensen, is there a second?
This is Kathleen, I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Um, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor will signify with aye. I vote aye, Lisa Whalen. Pam Mortensen?
Aye.
Kathleen Refkin?
Aye.
Ann McGregor?
Aye.
And John Chamberlain?
Aye.
Motion passes, five-oh. So that, um, concludes our consent agenda items. We'll move on to our public hearings. And this is, um, to approve of, uh, to vacate a portion of Halsted Road, and maybe our engineer will, um, give us an explanation on that one. And then, um, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Volski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So before you this evening is, uh, is a recommendation to vacate, um, Halsted Road. Um, and, and as the mayor indicated, this is, this could be cause for confusion. But if the council wanted to take a look at page two seventy-four of the packet, that, um, provides a, a description or show, illustrates, um, what was shown as Halsted Row in, um, or part, Halsted Road in the Hessberg Edition Platte. And that's the portion that we're proposed to, to vacate. So this is a, a north-south section of what we refer to as Hardscrabble Circle. So it's that north-south segment that lies just to the east of County Road Forty-four. So when, uh, staff is taking a look at, uh, twen- the twenty twenty-one local street improvement project on Hardscrabble in the preliminary phase, we noticed that the, um, the, the paved portion of Hardscrabble Road was not within the right-of-way. And it, it made sense that it wasn't because this, uh, this particular segment of right-of-way is through a wetland area. So, um, it makes sense that it's not in that location. Unfortunately, when the road was shifted, when it was constructed, um, for whatever reason, the right-of-way was not changed to reflect that. So I think the council, um, was very smart to take a proactive approach in this, um, in this instance and, uh, to, to go ahead and, and make things, make things clear here so that we could get an easement over where the actual roadway is and work to, um, to vacate the, the portion of, of right-of-way that is vacant. So, uh, the Nature Conservancy currently owns the property on each side of both the road, roadway and the right-of-way. So again, on page two seventy-four, there's a, a crosshatched area sixty feet wide that indicates the right-of-way to be, the proposed right-of-way to be vacated. And then there is a, a blue line with some red hatching on each side. And that indicates the roadway easement in blue. And then we requested to get a drainage and utility easement on top of that. Um, and the reason being is that the Nature Conservancy wanted some, um, wanted a way to memorialize that, that the roadway width would remain close to what it was. And so that's why we took two, we're looking to take two separate easements over the roadway. So with that, um, we are recommending to the council to vacate, um, Halsted Road, um, according to the description included in the packet. And then, um, concurrently, uh, we would be accepting an easement, um, from the Nature Conservancy to cover the current alignment of the roadway, which also covers, um, our, the roadway in our twenty twenty-one street improvement project. So there's a resolution, um, included in your packet for consideration. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Thank you, Ms. Volski. So, um, Hardscrabble, as we know it, Circle or Road, I'm not sure, um, is actually Halsted Road, which is really weird because we have, actually have a Halsted Drive elsewhere in the city. So, um, I wonder when this was changed, when the name was changed. Is there any record of that?
That's a good question. I don't have that at my fingertips. I, uh, and there's certainly experience, um, I've had experience in other communities where, for whatever reason, the name has changed. I don't know if it was just, um, you know, if it was, if, if people just started calling it something differently. There are times where, um, a roadway name is changed by, by resolution. Um, we didn't research on, on, as, as to when it changed and why.
Yeah, okay, but it's, um, currently known as Hardscrabble, so, all right. Um, council, any questions of staff? Otherwise, it's pretty, um, explanatory. This is a vacation of a road, so it does require a public hearing. So, uh, what I'm going to do right now is open the public hearing. And if there's anybody on the call that would like to make a comment, um, regarding this vacation, you can do so at this time. I, Mike, I don't see anybody, um, unless you can see somebody that I can't.
No, Mayor, I see just, uh, council members and staff on this call currently, so.
All right, thank you. So with that, then, I will close the public hearing, and I will take this back to council. Council, what is your pleasure here?
Um, I make, oh, I make a, uh, motion to approve, to vacate a portion of Halsted Road, uh, way that connects the northern and southern portions of Hal- Hardscrabble Circle in conjunction with the twenty twenty-one local street improvement project.
Thank you, Ms. Mortensen. Is there a second to that motion?
Kathleen, I'll second.
Okay, um, Kathleen seconded that. I'll give it to you, Kathleen. Um, with that, then, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none then, all those in favor will signify with aye. Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
Ms. Refkin?
Aye.
Mr. Chamberlain?
Aye.
And Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I vote aye. So motion passes, five-oh. So we will now move on to our business items. Our first business item is our MS, our twenty twenty-one MSA Street Improvement Project, which includes a portion of Sunny Field Road. I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Volski again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, this item before you this evening, um, the first of three, um, is to accept bids and consider award of contracts for the municipal state aid street improvement project, Sunny Field Road. Um, that's a full-depth reclamation from Langwood Drive to the end of the paved section. We also included the Millan overlay of Langwood Drive, which is a local road. Um, due to the proximity to the project, we added that to the project plans for bidding. We've also included trail resur- resurfacing. And I do want to make a, a clarification on this. Um, we did adjust ever so slightly by about fifteen feet the tre- trail resurfacing, um, limits. We're not going all the way into County Road One Ten, um, because, uh, when we went to get the permit from the county, they were requesting some additional work that was out of scope. So I, I'll, I'll cover that a little bit later, later, but I did want to make that clarification on the limits of trail resurfacing. And then also, um, some util, miscellaneous utility improvements, some replacement of, um, of a, uh, covert underneath Langwood Drive, um, some catch basins at the Marina Drive in, intersection. And then also replacing the, the, adjusting rings in the sanitary manholes in Langwood Drive. And then doing some inflow and infiltration barriers also in Langwood Drive. So for this project, there were nine potential prime contractors on the plan holders list, and we received five bids. A bid tabi, a bid summary, a letter of recommendation of award, and a resolution is enclosed for the council. The lowest bid was received from Northwest Asphalt for a total of five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-six cents. Um, Northwest Asphalt has done work in the city previously, uh, back in twenty nineteen. They were the contractor for the local street improvement project, which also included the city hall parking lot. So they have some recent experience in the city, that, that project went well. Um, so we are looking forward to working with them again. Um, on page two hundred and seventy-six of the packet, we did provide a summary of, um, how the estimates have progressed from the feasibility estimate back in January to the, um, the estimate before we bid the project as we, as the final design had been completed, and we had some, um, some estimated costs that, based on that. And then where we came in on the low bid. So as you can see in that table on page two hundred and seventy-six, um, we came in, uh, just about thirteen thou- just over thirteen thousand dollars less than the, um, the pre-bid estimate. So we're certainly, um, happy with the bid results. Um, when you look at the, the breakdown, um, we see the, the stated surface improvement costs. That's the Sunny Field Drive reclamation. That came in underestimated, as did the trail improvements. Um, and then we saw some, some of the local street improvement costs ever so slightly increase. Um, and then also some of the drainage improvements increased. And the, the drainage improvements, um, as we've, we've conveyed to the council in the past, we are seeing pipe prices, um, increase. Fortunately, these pipes, um, for the drainage improvements are reinforced concrete. So, um, we're not seeing it to be as, as much of a nit pipe, as a increase in pipe costs as you'd see with, with, uh, PVC or the HDPE. So, um, just to go back to the, the trail, um, comment that I made earlier. So I wanted to clarify with council, um, what's, what's transpired, um, from the time that we wrote this report until today is, um, when we went in to apply for the permit, uh, from the county to do some of the removal and replacement of a trail within the right-of-way, the county came back originally, um, indicating that, um, some upgrades to the signal, pedestrian signal crossing at County Road Ten would be, um, necessary based on their policy. Um, and so we had quite a bit of back and forth with the county staff. Um, and then the county staff went in, had an, an internal meeting and provided some clarification to staff here on Friday that our options were to either, um, keep the trail removal limits and replacement as shown in the plans and replace the pedestrian curb ramps on County Road One, One Ten. Um, when we look at those costs, based on what we got for bid prices, our bid prices on that were a little higher than we would have liked to see, and that was, that would be over fourteen thousand dollars. And when we looked at this project initially, um, we didn't include those curb ramp replacements because, um, because we would be so close to the signals on County Road One Ten. We weren't doing any roadwork on One Ten, and so all of the curb removal necessary with those curb ramps replacements and patching, we'd be patching into a county road. So we didn't feel that it was, uh, prudent to move forward with that. So, um, as such, when we look at the, uh, the limits of the county right-of-way, we are able to pull the, the trail removal limits back by, I believe it's about twenty feet or so, fifteen or twenty feet, so that we're not within the right-of-way. We do not need a county permit. And so we, um, we've adjusted the plans to do that slight modification. But in doing so, we need to get the state aid office to sign off on the revision. We don't anticipate that to be an issue. However, the person who, um, signs off on the plan set was not in the office today. And so with that, um, I'll be wrapping it up here shortly, but the, the, the slight change, the modification would be in the resolution for this item in that we would be, um, requesting on page two hundred and eighty-five, the number three under therefore be it resolved. It currently states that the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized and directed to enter into a contract with the bidder for the construction of the improvements and for, and on, for and on behalf of the City of Minatrista. And I would request that the council add subject to MINDAT signature on the plans so that we can be crystal clear that it's the council's intent to award the project contingent upon MINDAT approval of, of the modifications. As I indicated, we don't anticipate that to be an issue.
Madam Mayor, may I jump in right there?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I have changed the resolutions to reflect what, um, Allison has requested. So the resolution does state what Allison asked.
Okay, it, I don't think it's in our packet though, correct, Chris?
Correct, it's not, because it was a, a, a change that was made today.
Yeah, okay, so, but nonetheless, the, um, motion should, uh, state that, um, number three is subject to the Minnesota DOTS approval, MINDAT's approval of the modifications. It, the motion should state that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Um, so just, just, sorry.
Yeah, I was going to ask, is that it, or do you have anything else?
Well, I, I just wanted to wrap up the, the discussion. Um, so when we talk about the construction cost, um, we did see a wa- a wide range, um, in, in the bid prices from the low bid of five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-six cents, um, all the way up to nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, sixty dollars and sixty cents. So we did see a broad range. Um, we're, we're recommending approval of the low bid. It's a unit contract, uh, unit price contract. So the contractor is only paid for the actual con- unit, contract units that are constructed. And so that's important when we talk about that, for example, the trail removal limits. We're looking at pulling those back. When we look at adding in, um, a five percent construct, construction contingency um, to, in an attempt to account for any unforeseen field conditions that are in place and twenty percent indirect costs, um, we're looking at a project, total project cost of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and two cents. Um, so with that, I would, um, recommend to the council to approve the resolution um, with the modification as noted, and I would be happy to answer any questions that the council has at this time.
Okay, um, thank you, Ms. Volski. So just real quick for clarification, um, the trail costs of the, uh, state aid drainage improvements as well as the actual cost to Sunny Field, those are MSA dollars. The sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty cents for the local surface improvements, those would have to come out of our street fund. those would have to come out of our street fund. And then the other question I just have is generally or typically, we've never assessed trail improvements. So I'm assuming when we're talking about assessments, which are for the school district, for Sunny Field only, that would include the $455,000, the drainage improvements, and 5% contingency and 20% indirect costs, correct?
That's correct. You'd be looking at the costs of Schedule A and D for assessment.
Yep, all right, thank you. Council, questions, comments? I'll go to Ms. McGregor first.
No, I don't have anything.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Trumperlin?
Ms. Folsky, could you give me a professional statement as to why the range in these bids were so far? I mean, the high bid is 54% higher. I've never seen that, and I've only been here three years, but I've never seen that range before.
Madam Mayor, that's a great question, Councilmember Trumperlin. You know, it's one of those things where I think the contractor saw this as, you know, we'll do the project, but we're gonna, we'll be looking to make some money off of it, more so than some of these, if the other bidders. If you look at the two low bids with Northwest Asphalt and then New Look Contracting, you know, New Look was, I mean, they were still about ninety, ninety-six, ninety-six thousand dollars more than the low bid, but still within the range of the estimate. But then we just see the next three bidders go higher. And that's just telling me that these bidders are probably pretty busy for the year, but looking to pick up another project if they can make the right percentage profit off it.
Then one other question in regards to that. Typically, we see the mobilization as being kind of a floating point where maybe the numbers can, don't ever match up because they all selectively put in there maybe things that we don't think would go there. But I noticed, kind of eyeballing, there's one line item that looked like on these was definitely higher. Could you tell me what select granular embankment is? In that, that was one where they all, for the most part, were considerably higher than your estimates. And what is that process?
Select granular is a fancy name for sand. And it's a component that we need, that we included a larger quantity with the Sunny Field Road portion because we need to build up the strength of that road. So I don't know where each contractor gets their product from. Oftentimes, we'll see higher bid prices on that item if they have to truck it a little further than others. That certainly factors into their cost. That would be, that would be my opinion on why we're seeing such a spread in that.
Well, that would probably make sense in that the other, another line item that they were all higher on was the aggregate base. So I didn't know that the price of rocks had gone up, but evidently everything is going up.
Well, we're certainly seeing some higher prices. But yes, that would also be, I would be, I would look at where they're getting their supply from, is probably.
Appreciate your work on this. I'm glad the estimate and what the low bid is are so close. I appreciate the work, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Trumperlin. Ms. Mortenson, any questions or comments?
Just one question on the trail improvements. Is this, could this money be taken or used from the parks fund? Or is that something totally different?
No, this is coming from our MSA fund, which would actually be better than taking it out of our park fund. So, yeah, we want to kind of preserve our park fund for other things. Now, we do have some trails that we're going to be doing on Minneapolis Avenue, and we'll take the funds out of that fund for those trails. But this one, we can use MSA. But good question.
Okay, that's, yeah, I was just wondering if that was part of MSA, so thank you.
Okay.
That was my only question.
All right, and Ms. Revkin, anything?
Allison, what happens if MinDOT doesn't sign off on it, on the trail?
Then we would have to, we would have to work to modify the plans to make it so that they would, that they would approve of the plans. But as I indicated, I don't see a reason why they wouldn't because the plans don't show any, anything as far as the curb ramp replacements. So we already, we weren't doing that work. We're simply modifying the extent of trail removal and replacement. So I really don't anticipate, that's a good question. It's always, you know, you always play the what-if. So that's what we would have to do, is work with them to get a plan set that they were okay with, and then come back to the council with the modified plan. But I don't envision that would be the case.
Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you. All right, so with that then, I'm looking for a motion to approve or accept the bids and awarding the contract to Northwest Asphalt, correct? In the amount of the low bid as presented, and to modify the resolution or the motion should also state that the Minnesota, subject to MinDOT's approval of the modifications to the trail. Is there a motion to that effect?
This is Kathleen, so motion.
Thank you, Ms. Revkin. Is there a second?
This is John, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperlin. So Ms. Revkin made that motion, and Mr. Trumperlin seconded that. All those in favor will signify with aye. I, Lisa Whalen, vote aye. Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
Ms. Revkin?
Aye.
Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperlin?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0. So next, it's declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering the preparation of proposed assessment and calling for the hearing on the proposed assessment for this road. Ms. Folsky, I think that's you again?
It is, Madam Mayor. Would you like to do that item first, or to approve a professional services for construction?
I'm sorry, I just kind of glossed over that one. All right, so, yes, so we'll go to that one. That's the next one, actually. So approve the professional services agreement for the construction services. This would be for the Sunny Field Road project. Ms. Folsky?
That's me again, yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So included in the packet is a proposal for construction administration services for the Sunny Field Road project. The construction services generally consist of administering the contract. So WSB would act as the city's liaison to the contractor. We would have weekly meetings, keep track of pay vouchers and such, coordinate, and have WSB forces do the surveying necessary for the project, materials testing, permit applications, erosion control, all of the components that go along with administering a project. We propose those services along with record drawings. The fee breakdown is on page 287 of the packet. And all things, all things put together, we're looking at $79,270. So when we put the fee together, we did estimate it based on, we're anticipating an 11-week construction schedule of forty hours a week, and then ten hours a week for the pre and post-construction fieldwork. We did, I did have an opportunity to get an update from the contractor last week after the packet went out. They are looking at a seven-week construction schedule. So we are feeling fairly good with this number for construction observation. But in the event that something comes up during construction, that is, of course, an estimated number of hours to complete the work in order for the city, to ensure that the city is getting a quality product. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. There is a resolution included in the packet with a recommendation for the city council to approve the professional services agreement.
Thank you. Council, questions? I'll start with Ms. Mortenson. Any questions?
I do not have any questions.
All right, I'll go to Mr. Trumperlin. Mr. Trumperlin?
Do we know when school starts back up?
Yes. So actually, yeah. The school has requested that, thank you. So the school has requested that a substantial completion is more like around the middle of August and try and hit that mark. That is because a lot of activities are going to be starting up, and there's going to be more traffic. So that's one of the things that will be discussed at the pre-construction meeting. Just yes or no, is that correct, Ms. Folsky?
That's correct. The school district has also provided us with their, their, the schedule for all of their activities throughout the summer. And so we'll also be sharing that with the contractor as well. But the contractor anticipates that they'll be out of there by early August.
Yep. And then, Mr. Trumperlin, good question too. But this is the company that did the Oxy Oak and Duchene Lane project. They were very quick. That was in 2019. So I'm not 100% confident, but I'm encouraged that they will do this job quickly.
Let's hope so, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, let's hope so. All right, Ms. Revkin, any questions?
Allison, so this is, since this is my first go-around, what exactly is the construction observation? Like, does he just stand out there while they're working? Or what does Matt do, I guess?
So a construction observer, there are certain critical points in the construction of any street or utility that you want, for the city's assurance that it's constructed properly, that you have somebody out there to witness how they're doing it. For example, to make sure that they're putting the right amount of sand and gravel down, and that they're compacting it properly. The construction observer also goes and schedules the surveying crew. He also, he also coordinates the soils testing. And then there's, it's just a requirement to make sure that everything that's going in is going in according to plan. And, you know, certainly, you like to give contractors the benefit of the doubt, that they're in there to take good pride in their work. But we want that the city to have assurances that things are being done properly.
Okay, that's all I have.
So just, Ms. Revkin, just kind of FYI. When we did some of the roads in Hunter's Crest, we, because of our observation, our, the person out there watching, they actually determined and saw that they weren't using the correct, I think it was sand, and it wasn't being compacted right. And we actually made the contractor go back and redo it. So it was very important. So it is an important, but good question. What did they actually do? All right, Ms. McGregor?
No, no questions.
All right. With that then, are we prepared to pass a resolution approving professional services agreement for the 2021 MSA Street Improvement Project, number 0121?
So, this is Pam.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. And is there a second?
This is John, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperlin. So a motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor will signify with aye. Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
Ms. Revkin?
Aye.
And Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperlin?
Aye.
And I vote aye, Lisa Whalen. Motion passes 5-0. So now we'll move on to the next one that I wanted to do earlier. Declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering the preparation of the proposed assessment and calling for the hearing on proposed assessment rule. I believe, Ms. Folsky, you again?
Me again, here. One more time here. Madam Mayor, members of the council, so with a portion of this project is proposed to be funded, or proposed to be assessed to benefiting properties next to it according to Minnesota State Statute 429. In doing so, the city must declare the cost to be assessed in order to the preparation of proposed assessments, and call for the hearing of the proposed assessment. When we are looking at this project, the council may recall a discussion previously about assessing 40% of the project cost. I believe that was on January 19th at a work session. Based on that direction, and looking at the surface and drainage improvement costs that are recommended to be assessed, on page 291 of your packet, there's a table that does a breakdown of the construction cost, the total cost, which includes that 5% contingency and 20% indirect, and then what the amount is when you assess 40%. So when we do that calculation, the 40% assessable cost comes out to $260,347.04. There are five properties that are adjacent to Sunny Field Road that were identified in the assessment, in the assessment table on the feasibility report. And all of them are owned by the West Tonka School District. On page 292 of the packet, there's an illustration showing where these five parcels are located. Council can note on the northeast corner, the northeastern lot, parcel number three, consistent with the feasibility report, recommending that that has zero assessment to it because it doesn't have direct frontage, and because a wetland covers the majority of the parcel. We also took council's direction from the last council meeting when assessments were discussed, to round down to the nearest $1. And we calculated the unit assessment, as shown on page 292, to be $26,034 per unit. As such, we have the four parcels identified there at the bottom of page 292. Sorry, at the bottom of page 292 is a breakdown of the final assessment amounts that we are recommending to take to the public hearing in June. And I've also included the preliminary assessment amounts for council, just as a, I thought it was a nice item for the council to see as a comparison.
Okay, why do you have, why do you have it as 10 units on page 292?
So when we, when we looked at the assessment methodology, it was based on, it was based on frontage, it was based on frontage of, along Sunny Field Road. So it was 10 units of frontage. And then you had a different number of unit counts as it goes along Sunny Field Road. So you had one unit of assessable benefit to part one and so on.
It really wouldn't matter in this case because it's all owned by the same entity. So whether it's one unit, or four units, or 10 units, it doesn't really matter. Okay, thank you.
And so with that, we are looking to recommend levying the assessment for a 20-year period at an interest rate of 2% per the council direction when we had the discussion on the assessment policy. So the next step would be to declare the cost to be assessed, order the preparation of the proposed assessments, and call for the hearing on the proposed assessments. The assessment hearing, at the assessment hearing, the council can determine the final assessment amount to the benefiting properties. And once approved, the assessments would be levied in 2021 and be certified for 2022. Because of, because there are five Mondays within May, we are looking to call for the public hearing for the first meeting in June, which is June 7th, 2021. We would have the notifications in the official publication, and then the assessment notices sent to the benefiting property owners minimum of two weeks before the hearing date. So in conclusion, we're proposing to assess 40% of the project cost, which amounts to $260,340. And for preparation of an assessment rule, to declare the assessment amounts and call for the hearing on the proposed assessment.
Thank you.
Happy answering your questions.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions?
Yeah, this is Ann. So just being new to this, is it, is it normal that the high school would just accept this number, or are they going to contest it?
Well, we've, we've never done this before, so. I, yeah, anybody's guess.
Okay, all right. And what happens if they're contested?
Allison or Ron, do one of you want to weigh in in terms of the process?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Council, this is Ron Beatty. The school district has the same right as any other property owner. And if they wish to contest an assessment, it's a two-step process. Before or at the public hearing, they need to file a written objection, which puts the city on notice that they object to the assessment. And then they have to follow up with that by filing an appeal in district court, basically starting a lawsuit.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe if I can just chime in, I think, at least from my perspective, I think the school district was looking just to be treated fairly. And I think through the work session discussions we've had, we've changed the assessment rate from 50 to 40, and we've made an adjustment on our, on the interest rate on this one from, I guess, 3.25 to 2, based on our discussions we had earlier in the year. So, I would be surprised and shocked if they would actually challenge this, but I guess you never know.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's a fair assessment, Brian. I, I don't think they're thinking about it, about doing that, but I don't think any of us want to say 100% no they won't. So, but, yeah.
Lisa? Just one other quick note. This is not a new discussion.
Right, exactly.
You guys, the staff has been talking to the school for at least two years on this. So, you know, it is something that we've been very transparent about, and they've been included in all the conversations. So, it would surprise me also if they contested at this point.
Right. And then, if you also look at the, the difference between a 30% or a 40% by the, you know, that could easily be chewed up with attorney fees and so on if they were to contest it. So, my guess is like Brian said, they're probably not going to. With that, I just want to make one comment. I don't know if it would really pertain to this assessment so much because all of the assessable costs are coming from our MSA fund. So, maybe once they pay the assessments, it goes back into our road fund. But for other assessable projects, we really should be, and I think, John, Mr. Trumperland, you brought this up, I talked with you about it. We really should be taking the stormwater assessments and putting those back into our stormwater fund. Now, I talked with Brian about this before, and the easiest way would simply be to say, this is the number, total number that we're assessing over a 20-year period. So, every year, we'll just transfer X number of dollars from our road fund into our stormwater fund. Otherwise, the money that we're taking out of our stormwater fund to pay for the projects, it's actually then, when it's paid off, going back into our road fund. Is anybody interested in doing something like that? Or do you want to have a bigger, more in-depth conversation about that?
I think that it's something that should be given consideration. I don't know if there's a, if we do it on every little dollar, maybe there's a threshold. But if the accounting process is simple, like in that the assessment is paid and you know that X is going to the roads and X is going this way, then it should be able, to me, it should be easy to be tracked and should go back to the fund it came from.
Okay. Again, I'm not sure that it applies to this one because it's coming from, all from the same fund. But in the future, I think we should at least decide how we want to do it. So, again, we don't have to do it tonight, but just kind of think about that for future assessments. So, or if we want to do it for the 2021 road assessments, we can start doing it at that time. Anybody else have any thoughts or comments regarding that?
Wow, this is Kathleen. I think it's a good idea. I guess it would just come down to Brian and how much additional work goes into separating that out.
Right. Okay.
I think, yeah, just maybe to chime in, I think it's, yeah, to do an annual allocation or split would be too difficult. And we could probably talk about during our upcoming budget, you know, work sessions as we get into the summer and how we want to have that basically revenue come back in. And I'm fine, fine doing it either way, but I don't think it would be that much additional work.
Okay, thank you, Brian. All right. Anybody else? Okay. So, with that, and then, I'm sorry, Allison, I think you said the net, the public hearing would be June 7th. And could you get that notice out immediately so that we aren't, don't wait for the two weeks, let me put it that way. Try and get that notice out right away.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we'll, we'll get that as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you. So, with that, is there an a motion to approve, declare the cost to be assessed and ordering the preparation of the proposed assessment and calling for the public hearing on the proposed assessments for June 7th?
This is Kathleen, so moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. And is there a second?
Zan, I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. So, all those in favor will signify with aye. I vote aye. Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Ms. Refkin?
Aye.
Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0. So, now, we will move on to, let's see, the pedestrian crossing, we already did that one, right? So, we can kind of move on from that? Ms. Volski? Okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. And then, now we move on to our embedded social worker, worker program discussion, and that is Mr. Chief Falls?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Council. So, in the packet is, is a staff report, which kind of gives a high-level summary of, of this topic. So, tonight's purpose is just to bring this to your attention and have a discussion regarding the embedded social worker program. So, you know, certainly, as I'm going through this, if you have questions, feel free to interrupt, otherwise I'll have time at the end as well for questions. But with that, I'll get started. So, certainly, mental health issues are not new to law enforcement. Law enforcement's been dealing with this, this issue and topic for, for years and years. With that said though, I think mental health issues are certainly much more prevalent than they used to be. We've heard a lot about mental health in the last several years, especially the last year or so. Some of that has resulted in mandated requirements for additional mental health training for law enforcement. I'm happy to say that all of our staff has been receiving mental health-related training for years, even before the mandates, but now certainly we're receiving even more based on the, some of the new mandates. And that will probably continue as we move into the future. And so, really, law enforcement's role in mental health-related issues is, is primarily directed towards that initial response. And so, for the purpose of tonight's discussion, that's not really the piece we're talking about. I think that our staff does a good job. They're well-trained to deal with mental health issues. But the piece that we're really, I guess, from a law enforcement perspective, there's a lot that can and needs to be done in relation to mental health that needs to go far beyond that initial response because that just doesn't address core issues. And so, it's, it's very frustrating to law enforcement because oftentimes, we deal with people that have mental health issues, and in many cases, we deal with the same people over and over and over, and they just don't get the help, either because they don't want it, or they don't know how to get it, they don't have the resources. There's a million reasons why. And mental health issues, as you know, can be very, you know, as simple as someone's having a bad day, makes a bad decision, and just needs to talk to someone and kind of get back on track, all the way on up to full diagnosis of mental health illnesses that need, you know, ongoing counseling or medication or both. And so, and a lot of times, those issues are exacerbated by chemical dependency, financial issues, relationship issues, so on and so forth. And so, it's, it's, I guess, the point I'm trying to make is it's a very complex issue. And so, in order to effectively address mental health issues, which clearly are becoming more prevalent, we really need to have a multi-pronged approach. And so, over the past couple of years, we have seen, you've probably heard about embedded social workers, there's kind of two models out there. There's the co-responder social worker program, which is really social workers that are hired by agencies and respond at the time of the call with police. That's not what we're talking about. That's generally for very, very large departments that have very large budgets and can afford to do that kind of thing. The embedded social worker program is a relatively new concept, and in my opinion, this kind of fits the needs that we see out here a lot better because it's, it's really, it's a follow-up program. And so, from my perspective, follow-up is the piece that law enforcement just isn't really able to do because we're directed to kind of go for that initial response. And beyond that, it's not, it's out of our hands. And so, the embedded social worker program is essentially, you have a social worker, a mental health social worker, that the police department forwards all mental health-related calls or reports incidents to them, and they do follow-up on those cases. And so, essentially, they're able to, to meet with the individuals and determine what if any care they need, what if any resources they need, and point them in the right direction and get them the help they need. And as a result, it cuts, it addresses the, the core issue, and they end up having less contact with law enforcement, for one thing, which is great. And they're just able to be much more productive and get along with their life because they're, they're addressing the core issues. With that said, there are a couple of departments, well, there's a number in the metro area over the last couple of years that have used the embedded social worker program, most notably Minnetoka and Plymouth, for the last couple of years, have shared a social worker between the two police departments. They've had great success with the program, to the point where their, each agency is now going to hire their own. And it's, it's proven to be very successful. They're seeing a lot of the repeat calls to the same places drastically decrease, which is a good thing because, again, that's the only way to address a lot of these core issues is, is through follow-up. And that's really just not the role of law enforcement. So, getting the embedded social worker program implemented, I think, is, is an asset to the communities, absolutely. More specifically, to the Lake area, a lot of the Lake area chiefs have had this discussion a number of times over the past several years, knowing that these types of programs were available, but quite frankly, they were just too costly for any of us to afford on our own. And so, fortunately, Hennepin County Public Health has received a grant. So, typically, a mental health social worker costs around $100,000 annually. Because of the grant, that, they were able to reduce that amount down to $60,000 annually. And it is a two-year, minimum two-year agreement because they would have to hire staff for this purpose. So, that's $80,000 in grant money over the course of those two years. And then furthermore, by partnering with several Lake area communities, we were able to bring that cost down dramatically to $8,600 per year, or $17,200 over the course of the two-year agreement, if, if the council chooses to participate. So, Hennepin County Mental Health is in the process of drafting an agreement. The Lake area agencies listed in my staff report have already agreed or had this discussion and have full support of their cities to move forward with this program. And we all feel that this would be an absolute benefit to all of our communities. And so, we're hoping to be able to participate. I will say that if the council chooses to participate, the, this agreement would not begin until January 1st of 2022. So, we have not, obviously, had our, this is not a budgeted item at this point. However, we have not set our budget for 2022. So, certainly, this is something that I'm hoping that we could incorporate into our budget for 2022 and 2023 because, in my professional opinion, this is really the piece to addressing mental health issues in our community that I think is, is missing, and there's great need for. So, I think this would benefit our, our police department and our community as a whole greatly. And I think the cost is an exceptional value for, for the services we would be getting. Let me see here. I guess, at this point, I, I don't really have much more to say unless I went too quickly. Certainly could stand for questions. Be happy to clarify anything if you have questions.
Thank you, Chief. So, do you know, so all the other, the six other communities or police departments, they've already gotten a nod of approval from their councils? Is that correct?
I believe all but one, and I'm not sure which. I believe Corcoran is, either is or was bringing it to the council. That's the one I haven't heard back on. As far as I know, the others are all in support of this.
Thank you. And so, worst-case scenario, it would be six departments versus seven departments that would be sharing in the cost. That would kind of be if, if Corcoran decided not to participate, right?
That is correct. And so, it started at the chief level, and certainly, all the chiefs were in support of this, but ultimately, the, the cities and the council, city councils would have to be in support of it to have it.
All right, thank you. All right, Council, any other questions of Chief Falls? I'll start with Kathleen.
No, I don't have any questions. I think it's a good program, and it would benefit the police department and the residents who have issues.
Yep, yep, good comment. Ms. Mortensen?
Just real quick, how are they tracking the, how effective this program is? Is there any way to really track this, other than just what you guys are feeling?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mortensen, that, that's a great question. You know, mental health-related calls in general are difficult to track because very few come in as, you know, dispatches a mental health call. A lot of times, we get an assault call, but there's an underlying mental health component to it. So, they're difficult to track. The departments, Minnetoka and Plymouth, I'm not exactly sure how they're tracking that, other than they have said that they can definitely see a reduction, a pretty significant reduction in calls or those repeat calls to known individuals that have had mental health issues. So, I don't have any absolute information or, or data for you at this point, but both of those departments were able to say that they were, they felt it was so successful, they wanted their own social worker and were willing to pay that increased cost to make that happen.
Okay. And I just want to add that it is a known fact that this last year with COVID, mental health is a big issue and will be probably for at least a couple of years. So, I also am in support of this.
Yep. Good, thank you. And Ms. McGregor?
Yeah, I talked to Mike about some concerns I had, and, and Chief Falls, let me just ask some questions. I'm not against it. I, I, in fact, the fact that you have the other seven listed and that they're for it and that there are other examples of it working and, and having it, all good, all good. But, you know, we're only 8,000 people. So, do you really get called on mental health issues a lot?
Yes, well, Madam Mayor, Councilmember McGregor, that, that is a great question. So, I'm going to try and quantify this as, as best I can. So, I had my staff pull some data for our department specifically, and as I mentioned earlier, mental health calls per se aren't as common, well, I shouldn't say that, I'll, I'll back up. They don't come out as mental health calls. You don't, so, the numbers that I have include suicidal persons and things like that which fall under mental health. So, the, over the past five years, the number of actual mental health titled calls ranged between 30- the number of actual mental health titled calls ranged between 36 and 55 calls, which doesn't sound like an exceptionally high number. However, many of the calls, and again, it's very difficult to quantify, but many, many of the calls we deal with, whether they're assaults or drug-related, alcohol-related, domestics, many of those, probably more than not, have some mental health component involved in them, but they're not tracked that way because that's not how the call was dispatched or how it came out. So that's a difficult number to quantify. But I will say that we do get a fair number of suicidal person calls, which is kind of the extreme end. But nonetheless, many of those people, this is a, just a recurring type of call. And so it's very frustrating to law enforcement when we go there and put a transportation hold on someone. They're sent by ambulance to go be evaluated. And two hours later, they're sitting back at home. So that is just a cycle that just recurs over and over again until either it gets worse to the point where they do something to harm themselves or, or they get the help they need. So really what we're trying to do, whether it's a suicidal person or just someone with some, it can be undiagnosed mental health issues or diagnosed and they just, we see a lot of people that are diagnosed, have known diagnosed mental health issues that are prescribed medication, for example. But they also have chemical dependency issues and so they lose track and they don't take their meds. And we can tell from the moment we get there, if we're familiar with them, if they're taking their medication or they're not. And those types of calls are fairly prevalent even in Minatrista and St. Bonnie. I don't know if that answers your question very directly, but.
Yeah, it does. It's good. But okay. And then for information's sake, for my information, how does something like this work? So let me propose something. Let's say you get a call, somebody gets a call. And do you still go out first or does this social worker go out first?
No, good, good question. So this is an embedded social worker program. So what this means is it's not the co-response program. So that would be an example of where a social worker goes out with the police to the call. That's not what we're talking about here or proposing here. We would still be, go to the call, the initial response, and we would handle that call. And then we would document it as we do with every call in a report. And then if there is a mental health component to it, and like I say, many of the calls we deal with do have a mental health component, those cases would be forwarded to this mental health social worker for follow-up. And that's the piece that's really, in my opinion, the missing link with mental health. They will follow up on it then and be able to get resources and, and all the things necessary to get these individuals the help they need.
And how do you determine if it's
Sorry, can you repeat the question? You broke up at the end there.
I'm sorry. And how do you determine if this is dangerous for the embedded social worker?
That's a good question. So essentially, we forward the case to them and they will review the case and then they'll probably make contact by phone or if this is a dangerous individual where they're concerned, they have concerns about their welfare, if they have to go and meet in person, then they would simply call us and we would go with them. Similar to what we do today with child protection investigations or adult protection investigations. Many times they will call us, meet here at the police department, and we will go with their, their social workers to the scene and let them conduct their interview or whatever they have to do.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome.
Okay. Thank you. And also good questions. Mr. Trumperlin?
Just a couple of questions. Kind of in today's world, without this partnership, in today's world, how does it work? Do, are we one-on-one then with a, with a a mental health social worker? Or how does that, how does it go today?
That is a great question. So I'm happy to answer that. So today, we just respond to calls. As I said, many of which are mental health related or have a component of mental health issues in them. For, it could be, example, a suicidal person. We would go there and if, if, if they've made, you know, if it meets the threshold to place someone on a transportation hold, we, the police, would do that. And then they would be sent to the hospital and evaluated there. And then oftentimes, they're sent right back home. Matter of fact, more times than not, they're sent right back home. Or another example would be if we know someone is, for example, they have diagnosed or they tell us they're diagnosed as a bipolar disorder, but they're not taking their medication. If they have family there that can care for them and it's not a crime, they haven't committed a crime or they haven't made any threats to harm themselves or anyone else, then in that case, all we can do is document it and leave. And they just, there is no follow-up. It just gets left at that. And if they don't seek help, then they're just kind of on their own.
So in today's world, then where the link breaks is where there is no, there is no outreach to a social worker, the hospital, you do your reporting. If they're transported to a hospital, hospital, obviously they're checking vitals or whatever and taking aspirin and go home, that type of thing. So then the piece that's missing is neither the hospital or the public safety is reaching out or having a social worker who will follow up later, whether it's that day next week, I don't know what that would be. But so that's the piece that's missing that you would be putting in the play here.
Absolutely. You hit the nail right on the head. That's absolutely the piece. And in my opinion, that's the most vital piece. I can't speak for the hospital, but this is law enforcement's frustration is that we, we have the initial response and that's really where our involvement ends. We just don't have the staff or the means or the resources. We're not designed to go beyond that initial response. So really, the next piece is that mental health social worker. And that's especially vital in cases with people that don't really want help because it's, it's not as hard if you, if we're dealing with someone who knows they have an issue and they really want to get help, those are relatively easy because they want the help. But the vast majority of people are either chemically dependent or they're just not in their right frame of mind because of some trauma or some mental illness disorder, or there's a number of reasons. And those are the people that slip through the cracks and they're the majority of the people. And so this, this would fill that void.
Okay. This sounds like a good program, especially being we've got a grant there. Certainly thinks it's a program. I think a program that we could go forward with. If and when that happens, then I would, I guess from my perspective, then would hopefully there be some type of, I don't know if that falls, where that would fall, but some type of a reporting process too that shows how many cases are being, that's being handled by the social worker in Minatrista.
Absolutely. We would, we would absolutely track the number of cases that we forward to the mental health social worker. And then we would have some feedback from them as to the disposition of, of cases. HIPAA might prevent some of the details, but certainly we'd get something back so that we can evaluate that program when we get close to the end of the two-year agreement and decide if this has been successful enough where we want to continue in the future or not. But we'll definitely track.
Yeah, that's, I think that would be great. The other comment is that this doesn't only pertain to Minatrista, it would also be St. Bonnie since we provide services to St. Bonnie as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep. So, all right. I think those are all good questions and good comments and I would concur. So we don't need to take any action on this. The chief just wanted to bring it to your attention and have some discussion and since we'll be talking about our budget in the next several months. So with that, we'll move on to business item C, and that's award the contract for the manhole lining project. Is this Mr. Peters?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The issue we have are two manholes located in the right-of-way along Kings Point Road that have a high rate of infiltration. I did include some photos and a map to show where they're at. My name is Director, Chairman, myself discussed this. And although it is a maintenance item and probably wouldn't need your approval, we decided to send this, bring this forward just for clarification and to show how the city CIP funds are being used. Infiltration, just to give you a little brief history for those who may not know, infiltration is just one part of inflow infiltration, also known as INI. I'm sure everybody's heard that. Infiltration occurs from the groundwater seeping into the sanitary sewer pipes through cracks, leaky joints, deteriorate manholes, inflow the other half, which is not this, but just to give you a little thing, is just a much larger problem. It's from sump pumps, roof downspouts, drains that are connected to the, to the sanitary sewer. INI, of course, entering into the sanitary sewer, mixing with all the raw sewage that we are getting and to send down to the MetTonsol to be treated. So in essence, we are paying the MetTonsol to treat quote-unquote clean water. I did include a list, a chart there just kind of shows what we pay the MetTonsol per million gallons of water being treated and what infiltration would be, would cost the city here from just your simple one gallon to seven gallons a minute. The two manholes, the first one, number 347, we found, well, kind of clearing out to do our cleaning this year, we do, we have divided the section, our town into four sections and we do one section every year. So as we're finding, as we're cleaning this out, we did come across this one buried, dug it open and did find out that inside, you know, a large amount of crustacean built up. You can see it in the photo. What that is, it's growth from the water just dripping in, similar to what's in a cave, you know, the staghorn mites you get in a cave. Similar to that, a manhole structure should be really clean, smooth inside. You should see the concrete, might be a little soil, but you know, it should be smooth and clean. These are not. Same with the incrustation in the other manhole, 375, right down the street. That's actually starting to cut the flow into the manhole off because it's more seeping through the, that through the cracks around the bottom there. We contacted Hyperline High Performance Lining, which was formerly known as R and R Painting. They have changed their name because they're more focusing on the lining more than painting anymore to get a quote for not the removal of the incrustation inside, cleaning, grouting of all the leaks and then installing the Spectre Shield liner. They've done work here in the city before. They've done four manholes for us already that have had serious INI, did a great job. And they just did the valve pit at Blue Station 7, which constantly, every year, seeing, sometimes twice a year, depending on rainfall, we've been replacing the sump pumps in there. There's so much water infiltrates through there that has ceased. This year, they're also doing the Blue Station 10 and 11 valve pits when we redo those. Same thing, just to eliminate that need to be constantly replacing these sump pumps in there. We've used, they've been used throughout the United States for several years. It does go with a 10-year warranty. It's designed for 100-year lifespan. The quote is not cheap. It's $17,930. But these are deep manholes. I believe one is 21 feet and one is 24 feet. So there's a lot to line in there. Just looking at the pricing that we have or that on the chart there, we did do a kind of a rough estimate. We did plug up the, the interior holes coming in and out with a plastic covered sandbags and tried our best to calculate the inflow in, coming in. Our best estimate is about four to five minutes a gallon comes in to just that one manhole itself, number 347. It is near the swamp. It is, it is definitely low, but it is fairly dry out, but it is just running in. So just using, just, you know, a three-minute, you can see here, three minutes per gallon, you know, breaking points for like six years, you know, all the way up to five, five gallons a minute. Your payback's 2.75 years. After that's paying for itself, with that amount of flow and the cost that you're having, it's just, there's just, it, there's no other way to explain it. It's just, it's throwing money literally right down the pipes. So with that, I guess, you know, conclusion would be to have them to have the work done. They're also contracted to the pits later this season. We would coordinate with them to do at the same time. Their past performance has exceeded our expectations on the other ones. Respect to shield lining, it's performing great. Looking at the total cost, the warranty associated with the project, definitely recommending going with them. The fiscal impact on these will be covered under the 602 Sewer Operating CIP. There's a line item in there just titled INI Repair. Basically, this is, you know, assigned a dollar amount of about $100,000 every year. It's not only used for manhole lining in this case, but we also use it for, last year, we did the structural linings in the pipes themselves. We did the short liners in there. In the past, we've done complete lining of sections of pipe and also for road improvement projects when we redo the upper areas of the manholes with the rings and we put the INI barriers in there. It's also used for that. So what we're recommending is contracting with the Hyperline High Performance Lining for the installation of the Spectre Shield lining in those manholes, number 347 and 375, located in the right-of-way on Kings Point Road at a total price of $17,930. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Council? Any questions? Seems like a no-brainer. Return on our investment, 2.7 years after that. Okay. Any questions?
This is John. I do have just a kind of a tracking. Back on the consent agenda, we approved the three-year contract for the OMS plus asset management. And I think you have the support for that. It listed, Gary, you listed what typically you track in there. So would these new linings then be tracked in that software and be listed as what they?
Oh, glad. I was going to say, so they'd be in theory listed, 2021, $17,930. So you've got a track record of what was done, when it was done, what it cost. And so it's kind of, it's not just tracking your assets, but you also can use it as a maintenance tool to look, to look ahead to say, well, jeez, we haven't looked at this one since, you know, the year 2000. It's high, it's high time we go check on it. Something to that effect. Correct. Correct. Yes, that program does track that. So each, each manhole has got a specific ID number, our listations. We are now in the process of putting all our separate pumps from the listations in there. So that program will track that. So basically the manholes that we've already done, if you would go into to say was facility ID number, manhole 400, just for an easy number. And you look that up and say, yep, here we go. We lined this one in 2017. We've lined this. We've run back to inspect it a couple of times. We also put that in there. It tracks all that. It tracks the cost of that. So also the beauty of this is when every four years, as the cleaning crew comes around, they are opening every manhole in our street for us. They are, as they're cleaning, they are looking, they're also documenting anything they see. We happen to find this one because of clearing out for them. But in certain cases, they have found, you know, this just for us, you know, built up over time. So, but yes, that keeps track of it, you know, in there. So we, yes, it's
Good question, John. Yeah.
Thank you. Sounds good.
All right. Anybody else? All right. So do I have a motion to award a contract with Hyperline High Performance Lining for the two, with the Spectre Shield lining for the two manholes on Kings Point Road? That would be number 347 and 375 in the amount of $17,930.
This is John. So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperlin. Is there a second?
Ziana, second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. So a motion is made by Mr. Trumperlin and seconded by Ms. McGregor. So all those in favor will signify with aye. Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperlin?
Aye.
Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
Ms. Refkin?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Lisa Whalen, motion passes 5-0. So that concludes our business items for this evening. So we'll move on to administrative, our staff reports. Mr. Barone, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a couple of things. Our next meeting will be three weeks from tonight, Monday, June 7. There's five weeks in the month of May, so we get that one extra week between this meeting and that meeting. And then one final item. I just want to take a minute or so to kind of review some information related to the American Rescue Plan, which is the money the city will be eventually receiving. I did have a chance before May 10, which is a week ago, to send an email to Zach Rodvold. Zach is the local chief of staff for Representative Dean Phillips' office, and asked him, you know, we were one of the 47 cities in the state that did not have a dollar amount assigned to us. And so I said, is there going to be any news about that? And he said, basically, they won't know until they announce it on the 10th. Well, we found out on the 10th that the details of our funding amounts and exact timing, which he said much to our dismay, still are unclear. But we did learn that our allocations will come through the state of Minnesota, not from directly from the feds. And the state cannot alter the eligible uses of the funds in any way. And they cannot also, and they will not be able to change any deadlines or anything. So but it could take up to another 60 days before our city would be able to get those funds. In general, it's anywhere between $85 and $110 per capita. So we're in the $800,000 range. And the uses that we can use still include investing in water, sewer, and broadband structures. And the cities, according to Zach, says we'll still have broad flexibility in order to decide how best to use the funding to meet the needs of our community. So it's kind of a good news, bad news. We will get the money. We just won't get it maybe as fast as most other cities, but we will get it. And there's actually a seminar tomorrow being hosted by the league. It's called the LMC Road to Recovery Webinar. It's from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. I believe the mayor's participating in that. I know Brian, we normally have our management staff meeting, but Brian's gonna cut out and listen to that. Since I'm responsible for that management staff meeting, I'll be running that. But I can watch the replay on Wednesday. They have it up posted within 24 hours. So and we do have three weeks between now and our next meeting. So with that, those two items, Mayor, I know Finance Director Grimm has one item, and then I think our engineer, Ms. Falsky, has one item as well.
Thank you, Mr. Barone. Mr. Grimm?
I'm sorry, I jumped in there quick. This is David. I just wanted to say quick, I do need someone for the next planning commission meeting. I know Mike didn't mention my name. I just wanted, I don't know if you wanted to get that out of the way very quickly, Mayor, if there's someone who could attempt to attend the planning commission meeting next Monday.
Okay, sure. Do I have a volunteer that hasn't done it yet this year?
This is Kathleen. I can do it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Kathleen. All right. Thanks for doing that, David. I thought about it earlier and then kind of slipped my mind. Thanks. Okay, now we'll move on to Mr. Grimm.
All right. Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, Council. I'll just give a brief update on recycling day, that cleanup day that happened on May 8, I guess a couple Saturdays ago. I think it went, I'm talking with Don Muchko, who coordinated, it went really well. I think the revenue was up a little bit from 2019, I guess the last time we had it. So I think that's good. I think it was pretty well attended, especially I think it sounds like the morning was pretty busy, the afternoon was, you know, had got a little slower, but still, you know, steady enough. So I think it was good and went well. I think people were appreciative and no real issues or anything having it. So it was a good day had by all, I think. So we'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other staff, Ms. Falsky, I guess?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick update for you on the council. The assessment, excuse me, the assessment notices for the local street improvement project were sent out on Friday. Folks started receiving them today, and it was noted that there's an error in that some letters were placed in envelopes that didn't match the address on the envelope. So we've quickly corrected, corrected that. We've drafted, this afternoon, Adam drafted corrected letters and dropped off the revised notices, ensuring that the letters matched the address on the outside of the envelope at the post office this afternoon. The notification, the revised notification still meets the requirements of the statute. So we're okay on that front. And Adam also quickly coordinated with Ally, and many thanks to Ally for updating the website with the message so that folks who have signed up for automatic notifications have been notified of this. And then Adam just will continue to respond to any messages that come in regarding that error in the notification.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff, council? All right. So we'll move on to council reports. I'll start out real quick. So Mike Barone and I had a virtual meeting with the executive director of WeCab, not WeCan, but WeCab. And we suggested that she come to a future meeting and under special presentations, and give the council an update as to what their organization does and how they operate. So we'll be seeing that in the future. We don't have a date yet, but she'll come sometime, maybe even in August or something like that. And then also attended the public safety meeting right after our last meeting. And that was attended by St. Bonnie City Clerk Administrator Brenda, and myself, and Mr. Barone, and Chief Falls. And then we also briefly discussed the fire district because it kind of seems to be not going anywhere. And so she suggested and felt that it would be a good idea if Minutrista and St. Bonnie could just simply sit down at the table and have a discussion. And so she suggested that the two fire district people, Kathleen, myself, along with our chief, and the two, the two fire chiefs from both communities, and then they're designated to council people, that we sit down at the table and just talk about where we want to go, why we want to go. And so we're trying, we're gonna try, and I think Chief Falls is gonna try and get that meeting set up. We're working, Chief Anderson with St. Bonnie, it's a very busy season for him right now. So we're gonna be working with his schedule as well as a number of other people's schedules. So we'll try and get that set up soon here. The other thing I wanted to talk about is after our special presentation today regarding the audit, it looks like we have a very significant fund balance. And so I'd like to have a discussion in the very near future about what the council would like to see. Do we want to keep it that high? Do we want to use it for some things? Just kind of have a discussion about that. I don't know if we're gonna have, I know next meeting, which would be our work session for January 7, is going to be an open house. So we can't have it then, but maybe we could have a, at our following meeting, and split the work session between a fund balance discussion as well as our broadband discussion. And if we think it's gonna take more time than the hour and 15 minutes that we normally have allocated, I would suggest we start at 5:00 versus 5:30. And we can make that decision at our next meeting. Is the council on board with that? Is that something you'd like to see or talk about? I'll go around the horn here. Pam, Ann?
Yes.
Okay, Pam?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Okay, and John?
Yes.
All right. So we'll do that. And then the only other thing I want to mention is, again, at our work session, we talked about potentially trying to get a list of properties that don't have access to MediaCom. And I know we can't get a complete address of all of the people that don't have it, but I would wager to say that all of us, or I know Kathleen, you're in a new development, so you might not have people. But I think all of us council members out here that are in the rural area know at least two, three, or four people that do not have access to MediaCom. And I'm thinking if we can send those addresses to Ally to, for her to forward on to the Lakeside Network, at least they would have something to go by, and it might get us at least started. My concern is that if we wait for MediaCom to give us that list, we may be sitting here for months on end. They just don't seem to be very responsive very quickly. Is that something the council might be interested in? Pam?
Yes.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Okay, and Ann?
Yes.
All right. Kathleen, I can include you, but I don't know how many people you would know in that category.
I just know people that are unhappy with MediaCom, not who don't have access to it.
And I know people like that, too. So the rest of us, put together your, put on your thinking caps, and it's not if they choose not to go with MediaCom, it's if they simply don't even have access to MediaCom. I think that would be a better, a list of people. If you could get that to Ally within the next week, I think that would be helpful. So that's all I have, and I'll move on to Ms. Mortensen.
I just wanted to make a request to add to the agenda on 6/7, a discussion and decision regarding Trista Day being held in September.
Okay. Yep, we should have that discussion. We'll add it to our regular meeting agenda. Is that okay with everyone?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right. Mr. Trumperlin?
I'll be attending the Pioneer Sarah Creek Monthly Meeting this coming Thursday, May 20, on which part of the agenda will be taken up with the 2022 budget discussion.
Yeah, I saw that. Looks like the proposal would actually decrease our contribution.
Actually, no.
Oh, I thought it was.
Actually, it goes back up. We dropped it last year based on, again, the fair market values. This year, we are, we of the six cities are going up.
Okay.
But not as much as we came down the year before.
Okay, there you go. Either way, and you'll report back to us and let us know. So great, thank you.
We'll do it.
All right. Ms. McGregor?
I attended the Gillespie Center meeting, and good news that their rentals are going back up, and they're starting to actually get quite a number of them in. And then they have a number of fundraising activities that they've been doing, and they've offered tax help to people. And May 17, they're basically started selling tickets for the Alan Al McCruises, and a portion of that will go back to the Gillespie Center. And June 10, they're gonna have a blood draw.
Nice. Okay. Great. Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it for me.
All right. Thank you. Kathleen Rafkin?
I just have a slightly overdue update on the Mount Fire Commission meeting from last month, April 21. When we had the meeting, I attended, Mike attended. I know he mentioned it at the last council meeting. The chief said they used all their Narcan that they get from the grants, so they're working on getting more because apparently it costs $125 for a two-pack of that. And they usually give both doses when they go out to a call for it. The building payment ends in 2022, which I believe most of you already knew. The new Tahoe that they ordered is arriving in June. And the Polaris that they ordered for the grass rig is there. It was getting a new pump added. The biggest news was that the pumper truck that they had planned on purchasing, they applied for a grant for it. So they were waiting to hear back if they got the grant. They would find out this month, I believe he said. And then if they do get the grant for it, that will cover 100% of the cost for that. So they could use that money to replace the 1990 heavy rescue vehicle that they have next on the list to replace. So that would be a big budget increase for them. And the sad news was the fish fight was canceled. And they're gonna talk about the budget at the July 21 meeting. There might be an increase, possibly 2% to 3%, but that won't be addressed till the meeting.
All right.
Any questions on that? And then I have a random question. National night out, does council decide whether or not that's going on, or is that something brought from a different level?
It's usually. Usually, yep, that's usually the first Tuesday in August. And Chief, I believe, you, do you make that call?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. Typically, I make that call, certainly with the input of council. Last year, we obviously chose not to have it for obvious reasons due to COVID. However, this year, I think it's late enough in the year where I think we would be okay as things are starting to open up. But we can certainly have that discussion if you're not all comfortable with that.
Well, I would think by August, again, with things opening up and vaccinations and all of that, yeah, in my opinion, I think it would be nice to do it. Anybody else want to weigh in?
I agree. It'd be nice to do it.
Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in on that one?
No, I think it's great. It's a great night.
Yeah. A good way to connect with, with our residents. And if you don't feel comfortable, you wouldn't have to participate. So pretty, pretty easy there. But all right, good questions. With that, I think, is that it, Kathleen? Sorry.
Yep, that's it.
All right. All right. Good. Didn't want to cut you off there. All right. With that, then, we have a conclusion to our agenda and our meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor, and Ms. Mortensen seconded that. All those in favor will signify with aye. I vote aye. Lisa Whalen. Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
Ms. Rafkin?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperlin?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. So we are adjourned. Have a great rest of the evening, and we'll see you back here in three weeks.